Seven o'clock, call meeting in order. All members are present. Where do you want to get this in there?
Sure. Father, we just come tonight. We ask for your wisdom. We ask for your peace. And we ask for your strength as the school system makes decisions. And keep in mind what's best for kids, but also what's best for the community. Father, just give us wisdom as we make decisions. In your name we pray. Amen.
Honors and recognitions.
Yes, Karina. We are blessed beyond measure, lucky, all the good vernaculars to... Come here, please. Our Spanish teacher, Ms. Ponte here, was named the 2425 Teacher of the Year by the Oklahoma Foreign Language Teacher Association, which consists of all-world language teachers from junior high to college, universities in the state of Oklahoma. She will represent Oklahoma in the Southwest COLD Conference in Arizona on January 23rd through the 25th. She will go through a series of interviews and will be competing with other teachers from the southwest states to be the Southwest COLD Teacher of the Year. To love her or to know her is to love her. Karina Ponte, Teacher of the Year. Want to say anything?
No, just saying thank you.
Got it?
Yes, sir.
Public participation. Debbie Parks to speak on taxes for the Excise Board.
Do I need to stand at a certain place? Anywhere? Okay. I'm here to address the agenda items of O or N, O and P. I want to start off by saying it is the responsibility of the King Fisher School District to always carry adequate insurance. And we know that that hasn't always been the case. We can reference this back when Mr. Sternberger was here. There's so much right there with what I just said that deserves an in-depth examination. Our community needs to begin the healing process. And this can't possibly happen with instructions from an attorney who doesn't even live here advising this board to protest the Excise Board's decision, file a lawsuit, or act on some other type of plan. This law firm cannot be the only firm in Oklahoma who specializes in representing schools. Perhaps it's time to review other options for representation. I urge each of you to think about your community and the families that live here and put an end to this long-drawn-out ordeal. The community is fed up with spending and then looking to us, the taxpayers, to pay for something that was completely out of our control. Thank you.
I've heard, I just want to clarify because we've been through this quite a bit. There's been write-ups in the paper. There's been communicated. The school has always had insurance. The school, if you look in the paper, it shows the premiums that were paid. The school has always had insurance. So the school had insurance when notified that the carrier was going out of business and they changed insurances. So when this got launched, we went back to the... We went and filed the insurance. The insurance then said that they weren't our carrier, that we had to go to the old insurance who was in fault. So the school board had... The school, you can look at the financials to see that. But the school has always had insurance. Those people have always had insurance. And so I just want to make sure that I put that out there. That we can't affect how they had their insurance. So I just, I think transparency is important. So go ahead.
It is very important.
Rose Nice, personal property tax.
I'm not a person who speaks in public, so excuse my mistakes. I know you guys have moral conscience. And what happened, it was not a moral thing that we shouldn't have to pay for. I live on a fixed income. I cannot afford these excessive taxes. And I know many others in this community just like me. And I think the school could figure out another way to do this without burdening the community so much, especially those of us on fixed incomes.
Brandy Willman.
My name is Brandy Willaman. And my family and I have lived in King Fisher for three and a half years. I don't know the Myers nor the Mecklenburgs. However, I've gotten to know a lot of great people here in town, and we love King Fisher. The damage that has been done to this community is sad, and the lack of self-awareness for this board is really embarrassing. I would encourage every taxpayer to go to All About King Fisher and watch the June 3rd board meeting. Mr. Glover explained he'd rather wait. But if the board wanted to make a payment, he would make the budget shortage work. Mr. Whitrock, you said, quote, "We spent all our $15 million budget plus $8 million in carryover without making a single payment." That's $23 million and without a teacher stipend. And I was assured that we would not. "We spent a lot of money," end quote. Mr. Glover also stated, quote, "We pretty much shut down spending the last four months," end quote. Well, why did the board not ensure that we cut back right after the lawsuit was filed in 2022 out of an abundance of caution? It was then said in reference to the Excise Board possibly rejecting the higher budget for the lawsuit. I hope the Excise Board does not do that to the kids. An ad hominem attack on the Excise Board for representing taxpayers' interest and standing in the gap? That blame is misplaced and ridiculous. Mr. Whitrock continued to explain how the school should and could absorb making a payment. Ms. Franks was dead-set and argumentative against making that payment. In typical milquetoast fashion, excuses were tossed around. The can was kicked and on we go. Then the very next agenda item was to approve the expense of junior high soccer, which was truly a Twilight Zone moment for taxpayers. The burden estimate has now increased from 12% to 18%. Do you think prospective business owners would consider a community where the taxes are now 20% higher? Do you think business owners will stay? The ripple effect will be so far-reaching that will affect our future economy. And you cannot be that glad. You were given a solution by the Excise Board in February, April, and again in June. You then lied to the taxpayers on record that there was just no way to do it. Yet we found out from the Excise meeting that it can be done. You knew it and just won't. The performed due diligence, the Excise Board said concerned citizens should submit questions about the budget and tax levy. You refused to answer on the advice of counsel. The same counsel, who advised against setting suddenly for $1.5 million while they racked up $1.1 million in fees, and then advised to settle at $5 million. The fact that you want to hire more attorneys with our money to fight the Excise Board is very rich. Finally, I'd like to make mention, should you get your way and raise our taxes to cover your inability to save money, there's a great many of us who have discussed forming a class and pursuing our own lawsuit. There are several possibilities and causes of action, and our tax increases would constitute damages. We will also ask for trouble damages. And for that math, take everybody's only $200 or $300 and multiply that times three. With 5,988 property and business owners, that's a lot of money. Prescident is being set right now in Edmonds where taxpayers have sued their school board in one. And along with a petition for a state audit, we will also petition for year removal.
Coming back.
Good evening. First of all, thanks for your time in the public portion of this open meeting. I just want to make a statement about our students' need to have the best chance to succeed as they may attend the King Fisher Public School System. Our children deserve the truth and the facts when it comes to their education. The people of this community deserve the same when it comes to the operation of this public entity of our King Fisher Public School System. I could ask a thousand questions for one goal. And that goal would be transparency on how do we get to this financial mess? Do we not have policies and procedures in this... Policies and procedures that are still in place? Do we not have a checks and balances procedure in place for any potential issues that may arise? Or do we just write the checks and hope it balances? It seems to me it's inventory time, guys. It's time to just get it all out there. Black, white, red numbers, all of them, and find out how, I know it's gone. That's fact. I think that's why a lot of people are really passionate about it, you know? I mean, it's a hardship on a lot of folks. And shoot, this guy here, he built the building prior to this one. I remember it being very transparent and very open and a very big need for it. There was no reason to get back to transparency or have a restoration of faith between the folks of this community and the school board system, the whole system. I know that the school board, the school knows how it can be done. It just... I think we need to be transparent on how it is we got to this financial mess. Everything needs to be out there or it can be public access. Thank you, guys, for your time. Have a good evening.
The discussion, possible action on the minutes of the September 9th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting, the September 13th, 2024 Board Meeting, the September 23rd, 2024 Special Board Meeting, the September 24th, 2024 Special Board Meeting, and the October 2nd, 2024 Special Board Meeting. Discussion, possible action on the minutes of the September 9th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting.
I make a motion we approve the September 9th Board Meeting Minutes.
I'll second it. All those in favor? Those... Motion passes. September 13th, 2024 Special Board Meeting.
I make a motion we approve that Board Meeting Minutes as well.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Motion passes. September 23rd, 2024 Special Board Meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
I'm abstaining. I was out.
Motion passes. September 24th, 2024 Special Board Meeting and the October... September 24th, 2024 Special Board Meeting.
I make a motion we approve those minutes.
Second that.
All those in favor?
I'm abstaining. I was out on that one too.
Motion passes. And the October 2nd, 2024 Special Board Meeting.
I make a motion we approve those minutes as well.
I second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Any discussion, possible action on the following? 2024, 2025 encumbrances. One, general fund encumbrances, accounts payable, 1512 through 1541 payroll, $7381 through $7,400. Two, co-op fund encumbrances, accounts payable, 1214 through 1215. Building fund encumbrances, accounts payable, 2107 through 2118. Change order listings in general, co-op, building, and child nutrition. Five, treasurer report. Six, activity fund and custodian report.
Mr. Walker, may we go through those right quick so everybody's on the same page? As we've done this, as we go through this, what... I've got the 1512 through 1516 are all career tech and Amazon accounts. And then whenever you get into 1517 through 1519, those as well are Amazon accounts for career tech. Number 1522 is for the King Fisher County accessory evaluation cost. Then we had roller mower repair for baseball field, softball field. Then we had some teacher orders in 1524. 1525 is for bus driver physicals. Got to have those to start every year. 33 welding and fabrication in 1526 is an ag ed expense. It comes out of 412, which is career tech money. On 1528 to Jasper Merritt, those were for four servers that crashed at the high school. We had to put new hard drives in. And kind of got to have hard drives to run a school. Moving on down, we had to repair the air conditioner on bus 3A on 1532. 1533 is exceptionally important. It's the batteries for the defibrillators that we have on. We get down into 1534 through 1536. That is more career tech expenses. Then we have battery backups for 1538 for Heather Mercer's computer that holds all the payroll. And then 1539 through 1541 are ag ed expenses. If you go to the page following, on payroll, $7381 through $7,400 are all for Rising Star. And that's $1,300,000 Rising Star grant. Two of those are for the grant authors in 7397 and 7398. And we will be paying those monthly instead of taking them all out at once. We appreciate the job Ms. Tolson and Ms. Redwine do on that. Then whenever you go over to the page after that... We really need to work on getting these numbered better. These are, we... The negative numbers beside the, like, 1104, 1131, 1134, 1138, 1153, those were all taken out and moved over to the building fund from general fund to give us $800,000 worth of cushion in the general fund. That's allowed by law. There's a, the new building fund law that was put in last year allows us to use building fund in an expansive manner than we've ever been able to use it before. And we've only, we have $427,000 that we've already got to pre-encumbered in building fund. But that will leave us with about $300,000 left over in building fund for things that we need. I will bring your attention to Clearwater and Oklahoma Natural Gas Company. We buy our natural gas off of a futures bid probably towards the middle of this month. And it'll be on the March futures, based off of March futures contract. And Oklahoma Natural Gas, we have to pay them to actually send the gas to us. As we go over to the next page, we have several things that were moved over, like Grimsley's for janitorial supplies, Crandall and Sanders for plumbing electrical service, and S&amp;J for some district-wide repairs to heat and air. As we move through this, these are... You continue to see that we're moving items over into the general, from the general fund over into the building fund to protect the general fund allocation balance. Because that's going to be the important thing that we've got there. Whenever we... Then the next page will be the change order for the, for some payrolls that Dawn ran in and moved around because of different changes that she had. Any questions? Do you want to see the balances on the general fund and the building fund?
We have them in our package.
You want to go over them?
Yeah, we can go over.
Okay. I'll make this pretty brief. These are... Okay. Whenever we look at this, this would be the page that I gave you that's on the table. And there's, I gave those to Swisher and to King Fisher. Dr. Johnson, there's some extras up here if anybody wants one. What we're seeing right now, this is the general fund revenue. Total available revenue last year was $25,436,254,36,000. Our total available revenue right now is $14,203,000. That's obviously a pretty big drop. And that is primarily due to, number one, us not having federal funds in the estimate needs because the State Department hasn't got the federal funds all configured yet. If you've seen it in the newspaper, it's been totally wonderful. The federal funds last year that we used were $2,345,000. Of course, we're not going to have that much this year. It's just going to be less. As we look down, total net new revenue last year was $16,852,7. Our total new revenue this year is estimated at $12,840,000 before we get the federal funds in there, which we will. One thing that I do want to point out is gross production last year was roughly half of what it was in the previous year, which was a considerable hit to the budget, which caused as much issue as anything. Probably didn't allow us to do some of the things that we thought would happen in the budget. What I would, we're at half of what we were last year. So if it's half of what we were last year, it's going to be a pretty grim year in Oklahoma. I think we're probably going to settle somewhere around a little bit above what we captured last year. And the reason I do is because of the profile that we're seeing right now early in the year. This is generally the slowest time, one of the slower times of the year for oil and gas collections. Because remember, we're sitting in, we're sitting three months behind on oil and gas collection taxes. So that's going to be two to three months behind. Now, as we go down, as we go down to the next page, our revenues date collected. We're running $5 million behind where we were last year at this time. And it's basically because we're $5 million less in the period. And you can see on the graph, on the pie graph, it shows up pretty astonishingly clear. Now, when we get down to the 2025 encumbered expenses versus the 2024, last year we had $22,172,000 out of general fund. We had another $1,560,000 out of the building fund. We've obviously reduced that because we don't have the capacity to be able to encumber that much money. We can only, the max we can encumber at this point in time is $14,232,000. So what we've got to remember is we are keeping this under very close watch because we can't afford to go over. And we've got to be very cautious about what we're doing as we're going through this. One huge difference that we'll see, if you look at the encumbered expenses versus the expenditures from last year, if you look at services, supplies, and property, we have drastically reduced those. And that is because we're really cutting back in those areas because we don't need them. We've squeezed those about as tight as we can. Right now, our salaries and burdens are... We're going to see a little bit of more of a move-up because there's some of those salaries and burdens. We know what they are, but we're trying real hard to make sure that we're staying in a proper encumbrance phase with those. The expended to date, we've expended $2,680,000 as of last Thursday. We'll have payroll go out this week. So that'll be on Wednesday. Are there any questions?
And that's a majority of that is salaries, payroll?
Yes. Yes. We're going to be heavy, heavy. One of the things that we've noticed in this, and I think I've told you this once or twice, but the salaries and burdens are unusually different from last year due on the percentages. And that's due to the size of the expenditures that we had in the services, supplies, and property. That was a lot of money. And what it did was it reduced the percentage of the salaries and burdens and gives a false look that, you know, the salaries and burdens were really properly aligned. And they really weren't. We've just got to be cautious as we move forward. What our goal has to be is to make sure we stay within that $13,689,000 or as close to it as we possibly can.
So looking at that, as you've prepared, you've been able to look at and diagnose this budget, right? I mean, you've been able to kind of help out with that. So it looks to me like from last year's budget, services and supplies of over $8 million, you've been able to reduce that to under $2 million this year.
Yes, sir. And I've got to say, the ladies in the office, the encumbrance clerks, the treasurers, the personnel people, they have really been exceptionally helpful. They know this budget inside and out. And they have really helped me to... We've worked on this together to try to get this, try to get the issue diagnosed so that we can start moving forward in a reasonable manner. And I really appreciate how hard it worked. Building fund, last year we collected $1,764,726.25. This year, we've allocated $1,371,806.27 all in. That's, we've got some movement. We've got a little bit of room left in there. We've moved those encumbrances over like I told you. And the reason, and that leaves us with about $150,000 cushion in that, which protects the general fund and its encumbrance profile. We want to make sure that as we move forward on this, that we're really watching all of these. All these budgets have to balance. Getting through, these two are going to be the main two that we work on. The other, the others we will get to as we move forward in the year. But I really wanted to make sure that we were looking at these two in particular. And I want to point out one last thing to you. If you look on the last page, the building fund in 2024, we expended $1,47,531. That was mostly up in services and a little bit in property and then a little bit in supplies. That was debt payment. And somewhat it was used for the project at Gilman. We've got to, we've got to keep that tightened down. We're at $461,000 in the services. That's about where we're going to stay except for the money that we moved over there. And that is an over encumbrance right now of $461,000. We probably won't have more than that left in there. Are there any questions? Are there any questions?
In a moment of appreciation, um, uh, thank you for putting this together, bringing this to the plate and putting, and bringing this together because, uh, this is, being on board, this is incredibly helpful. And this is all available to the public, right?
Yes, sir. The, these, these pages will go up probably in the morning. I, uh, and the other thing that will go up that's already up, but we're going to do a better, a little bit better job on it, is the budget that was caught up as of October seventh. But I gave you, I gave you the, the, the uni version of that. The rest of this is pretty, uh, is pretty much in the weeds. And if anybody ever wants to come by and talk about it, I'll be more happy to just, and it's, we can go through whatever. But we have a revenue budget on there. We have an expenditure budget for everyone. So that's what we're trying to build out. We want total transparency on this because our community deserves it.
I still move. I'll second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Have a discussion, possible action on the 2025 Kingfisher Board of Education. Meeting dates, time, and location.
Uh, we've, uh, we've got to be clear. I dropped this last night. It's kind of very scary. Yep. Um, we've got the first Monday at seven P.M. Uh, we'll be giving this to his voters, a county clerk. Uh, in order to schedule our meetings, uh, we will be moving the meetings over here to the, uh, junior high library. And the reason that we're doing that is because we want, you guys have...
Where we've had in this whole year.
Yeah, that's, this is where you guys have indicated that you want to make sure that people have access.
I make a motion to approve meeting dates for 20, 2025.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Discussion, possible action to approve transfer capacity by site and grade.
Yes, this was given to us by the principals about, and this is aligned based off how many students we currently have enrolled. Uh, we have a transfer capacity of twenty-five students in pre-K, no students in kindergarten, twenty-three in first, twenty-two in second, three in third, thirteen in fourth, five in sixth grade, nineteen in sixth grade, I said six in fifth grade. I can't even talk. I apologize. Uh, twenty-two in seventh grade, four in eighth grade, twenty-three in ninth grade, six in tenth grade, twenty-two in eleventh grade, and twenty-six in twelfth grade.
I, I make a motion that we approve October's, October's transfer capacity.
Seconds?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. I think they may be just adding some spots to it. Discussion, possible action for the following board policies.
Okay.
One through eleven.
Yeah, a lot of these, whenever you get materials from OSSBA, they, uh, have a lot of pages too. So, and there are a lot of subsections. The DABB is records investigation. EFA through EFAR two is about books in the library media center and the system that we will be utilizing to, uh, to monitor our books with a committee that is, that is appointed to evaluate and if we have a complaint about a book in the library, about how we will deal with that in an expeditious manner. Uh, it also has EFAR one is the selection of materials and the regulation, and it's all based off state law. And we, uh, we will be putting, we, we need to put these into the, uh, policy book, but we have to approve these as soon as possible. Uh, Strong Readers Act is based off of the dyslexia materials. And I did talk to, to, uh, State Secretary of Education Sanders, uh, on Friday, Thursday, I'm sorry, Thursday. And we are working on a program that would come into the middle school or the junior high, I'm sorry, it's the middle school. Uh, the junior high and the high school that would help dyslexic students use AI to be more, at a, at a higher, more efficient rate. It would be us in Calicoa if we decide we want to go with that program. And I think that would probably be something, yeah, it's pretty, it's a big, yeah, that's the big thing. It has that F R E E in front of it, yes. Um, and then student retention, these are regulations that were changed this past year. And these are a bunch of strikeouts that, uh, is based off 70OS twenty-four dash eleven, one fourteen point one. And we need to make sure that we're staying with that. And then finally, FFC, uh, oh, I'm sorry, E1AR five does a way with mid-year promotion in fourth grade based off the reading, reading tax. It was removed from law by Senate Bill three sixty-two in 2024. And then you've got diabetes and medical management plan, which we are requiring and will be checked pretty closely by the REO. So we've got to have those plans, uh, in place, which Kingfisher already does. We did a pretty good job with those kind of things because we have had several different students that suffered from diabetes. And we have always been able to keep those kids going.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Discussion, possible action on the following fundraising requests. Go and golf, divot, fixtures, and ball markers, two boys' basketball, race three sixty-five.
Yes, these are fundraisers to, uh, get our activity funds up a little bit in these areas. They're a little bit low. And these would be run from late up, the divots would run fall and spring. And then the, uh, race three sixty-five would be late October minimum.
I make a motion that we approve both fundraisers as requested. I'll second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Discussion, possible action for employees to voluntarily donate sick leave to the district's sick leave.
Oh, we got a tip-off.
Discussion, possible action on the following recommendation for club sanctioning on tip-off club.
This comes from Stephanie Willbanks, and she'd be the representative who would be providing information to us. And this is to sanction a tip-off club to provide meals for the, and senior gifts, snacks, decorations for senior night, and homecoming for basketball. And once again, with sanction act, sanction accounts, they would be responsible for their own, uh, their own, their own audits. They would be responsible for their own checking account. They won't be able to use any of the school's tax-free stamps. It's, we've done it for years. If they parents have done it for years, all sports were set up that way. I mean, it's not something new that we've done on a belief rest.
The clerk's a lawyer.
Yeah. I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Discussion, possible action for employees to voluntarily donate sick leave to the district's name sharing policy, D E F A for Jennifer Moyer.
Uh, this is a simple, this is a request that will be sent out if you recover it, if, I mean, if you, if you allow it. It would allow the sick leave bank to share days for Ms. Moyer, who has had a really hard time with stomach issues.
I make, I still move. I am okay. I'll second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Discussion, possible action on school site statutory waiver deregulation application for the 2024, 2025 school year.
This would move, uh, Jacket Academy to a four-day week with Fridays being an opportunity to catch up on work for those students that get behind. Uh, they feel like this would be, uh, beneficial because it will keep those students engaged. Uh, whether or not the State Department will give that to us, I do not know. But they, they filled it out, and waiver is requested for three days.
So they would, they would still, they would be there four day, I'm sorry, five days a week?
They're...
They, they would go.
Not everybody.
Not everybody. Friday would be optional.
But the, but the teachers would be there.
The teachers, yeah.
Yes, so they, they could help because whenever you're, you really run into, whenever you are moving over to the Yellow Jacket Academy, you're really trying to get your education up as quickly as you can so you can stay on track in your internship.
Yeah. Will there be reports provided to you that you know how this is going?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, ma'am. We will monitor that. I have that something built tonight.
I'm done. I make a motion we approve that, Ray.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Motion passes.
Superintendent, report.
Um, we did, we have, uh, got a discussion from the State Department for picking up a hundred and seventy-five thousand extra dollars in federal funds. Problem was held back last year on, uh, extra indirect cost. Uh, and I already told you about, uh, the deal with Secretary Ben Sanders. And, uh, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Ponce for her, her award, well deserved. Ms. Dawson?
So, my report for Gilmore, um, we had a really good turnout so far for our first night of practice conferences tonight. Just finished up, uh, a little bit ago with our second night tomorrow. Um, we are getting in the swing of things. We're going to be having field trips already coming up, which is, it's crazy. We're already ninety-seven. Um, and then, uh, this week we have fire safety week. So, um, all of our classes get to go out and they have a fire safety lesson with the firefighters. They get to explore the fire truck. Um, so a special shout-out to the fire department for doing that for us. Um, our stars, our new stars program, uh, before school and after school is going really well. Um, we've had a lot of attendance for the afternoon, and the morning is slowly, um, picking up a little bit. So, um, it's going really well though. So, that's it for Gilmore.
Ms. Meyer?
For heritage. Um, a little bit of, uh, update on the AC units. Um, they have been put in, we are right now, the electricians are there and are working. Once they finish, then, um, rags heat air will be able to finish what they're doing. So we're getting very close. Um, the kiddos have been, so what used to be SRA is now called, what used to be called RSA is now called SRA. And so we, the State Department did not do a good job in getting the assessment to us, the screener to us, um, this year. So they provided a, a free screener for the, the schools. And so that was a mirror. They got it to us and, not in a timely manner, but I had, um, my reading specialists and all of my take flight ladies that got in here and the teachers and got all of our kids assessed and were able to present that data for all of parent-teacher conferences. And the kiddos had to be, any of those under that forty percent title had to be put on what's called a slip. And, um, so they were able to present all of that information. And so we can move forward with all of that, um, beginning from this point on. And, um, the tier one plus and one, two, and three, working with those kiddos and intervention. Um, we also had a great turnout tonight for parent-teacher conferences. Um, we're also doing fire safety, so we're excited about that. Um, I think that's it. Um, for the Q, to piggyback on the fire safety, one of my fourth graders, they had a poster contest. And the winners got to get picked up in a fire truck this morning and got dropped off at school. They had the sirens and everything going. So today was fourth grade, tomorrow's fifth grade, and then Wednesday is sixth grade. So we had one winner for each grade level. And so you can check out our Facebook page. It has them arriving. It was, it's awesome them going through the call line. Um, but we're kind of celebrating students lately. Um, we've done our student of the month again on our Facebook page. And we started something new this year called Q Kitchen. So it might not be student of the month kids, but kids that are really good, make good choices. Um, and so once a month, we pick three boys and three girls from each grade level. And at lunchtime, myself and my house service, Kosta, we serve them pizza, pop, cupcakes. They get to sit at a special table. We have little candles, tablecloths, fancy plates. And so we separated them from the rest of the kids and they got, we served them. And so, uh, watching the other kids, how do we get to do that again? What do we need to do? Uh, it was a lot of fun. The kids really enjoyed it. Uh, and so we're kind of just celebrating right now all the good behavior and things that are going on at our building. And again, my first year in Kingfisher, the first nine weeks, um, it's been a little chaotic, but I think that it's been going very, very well. So, it's awesome.
Ms. Pierce?
Okay, at the junior high, um, again, parent-teacher conferences went really well today. We just celebrated a ZAC party last week. That's kind of an incentive party for kids to keep their grades up. We've posted some pictures on Facebook and Parents Square, uh, if you'd like to see those. We also, our junior high band earned fourth place at the fair. Our colored guard earned second place at the fair. Uh, so we're really proud of those kids. Also, tomorrow, the chef with our food service company, Tay Her, Tay Her? Why was it? Ta her. Ta her. Um, the chef is coming to our school, and he's going to be working with kids throughout the whole day, teaching some of our classes. They're, he is Korean, and they're going to be making Korean barbecue. Yeah, that's it. John, you're up.
Okay, uh, some not-so-good news to start off. Uh, we had four dropouts last year, and these are kiddos that, that did not go and enroll somewhere else, and we did not receive a request for records somewhere on them. I do know that a couple of these names, I'm looking at them right now, are working on their GED. So as soon as they finish their GED, we'll, we stay in touch with these kids. We try to. And if, if they get that, we can take them off of our list down the road. So we had four dropouts in 2024, one 2023, 2024. Um, we had a hundred and seventeen sophomores that took the pre-ACT test. Uh, the latest from the OK Reasons for Higher Ed will be here on December fourth, early release day, to go over the results with them in classes, and they will start to go over results with our teachers as well. So we're excited about that, that we can actually go over the results and, and see, uh, see where we missed and where gaps are. Again, we went over with Ms. Ponce. I'm so happy to, to have her. We hope she chooses to stay with Kingfisher for a long time. Um, Jan Swart was presented a big old happy Gilmore-sized check at the, uh, Bridge Creek game for twenty-five hundred dollars for STEM night, um, from, uh, OERB, that we get to spend on, uh, STEM stuff up at the high school. So she's geeking out about that. Um, this week, all freshmen were given instructions how to correctly fill out a resume and also fill out a sample job application. We had our county college fair that was held... We had our county college fair that was held this week and, uh, over 40 colleges representing three different states. King Fisher juniors and seniors attended, plus seniors from Dover, O'Carroll, Omega, and Hennessy attended. It's always a big, big deal. Miss Leftonwell and, uh, Ms. Faustal worked super hard on that. Um, also in the, the music realm at State Fair Parade, the high school band earned fifth place overall, earned a trophy and a cash prize. But the high school drum line earning third place and fourth band, and fourth in the band category. And the high school band also earned a superior rating at the tri-state marching contest and the class, overall class champion for class 4A.
Thank you. In proposed executive session for the purpose of confidential communication between the Board of Education and its attorneys concerning legal options to address King Fisher County Excise Board's amendment to the school district's estimated needs and to discuss possible action and intervention in state of Oklahoma. Mulready versus Oklahoma School Risk Management Trust. Case number CJ 2025-3954. District Court of Oklahoma County, the Board having been advised by its attorney that disclosure, disclosure will seriously impair the ability of the Board of Education to proceed in the public interest per cent of Oklahoma Statute 25307 B4 and 7. Additionally, for the Board of Education to discuss the employment compensation of positions of junior high secretary for the 2024, 2025 school year, the disclosure of which discussion would violate confidentiality, confidentiality requirements of state or federal law as authorized by 25 OS 307B1. One vote to convene into executive session.
I make a motion, we, we convene into executive session. I'll second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. The Board of Education met in executive session on October 7th, 2024. Room members consisting of Charles Walker, Colleen Franks, Carrie Payne, Dana Goldbeck, Brad Woodrock entered into executive session at 7:51 PM and returned to open session at 9:30 PM. Matters listed, as listed on the board agenda were considered in the executive session. No other matters were discussed. No board action was taken in the executive session. Item of discussion, consideration of vote to authorize the school district's attorney to proceed and take action consistent with discussion in executive session regarding King Fisher County Excise Board's amendment to the school district's estimated needs.
I'll make a motion to direct the King Fisher Public Schools attorney to proceed and take action consistent with the discussion in executive session concerning legal options to address the King Fisher County Excise, Excise Board's amendment to the King Fisher School District's estimated needs. I'll second.
All those in favor? Both votes. Motion passes. Item D, discussion, possible action to authorize Rosenstein, Fisten, Ringel to proceed and take action from the State Department, State of Oklahoma, Mulready versus Oklahoma School Risk Management Trust. Case number CJ 2025-3954. District Court of Oklahoma County. Case on behalf of King Fisher Public Schools, consistent with the discussion in executive session.
I make a motion to direct the King Fisher Public Schools attorney to proceed and take action consistent with the discussion in executive session concerning legal options to address the King Fisher County Excise Board's amendment to the school district's.
I make a motion to direct the King Fisher Public Schools attorney to proceed and take action consistent with the discussion in executive session concerning possible action and/or intervention in the state of Oklahoma, ex, uh, Mulready versus Oklahoma School Risk Management Trust. Number CJ 2025-3954, District Court, Oklahoma County.
Second.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Q, discussion, possible action or recommendation for employment to support personnel for 2024, 2025? Here, Kathy Neuer, junior high secretary.
Kathy, Kathy, uh, has, is coming back to us from, uh, Shelton Gibson. Uh, she was excellent secretary at the high school for years and then went to private, to Shelton Gibson. And our highly regarded Kathy, she's a great, she's an excellent.
And she's replacing.
She's replacing Michelle Connor, who will have her resignation here.
I'll make a motion that we, I think you said item Q, but it's blank, so item R. I'll make a motion that we approve item R for Kathy Neuer hire.
One second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. S, discussion, possible action to adjunct with all employee Xavier Bryant's physical education.
The adjunct on that, Mr. Bryant is already an employee, but we need to, uh, give him an adjunct status for our, uh, statistical report so he's able to, to be, to be, to be.
I second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Resignations.
Um, I'll read this. To whom am I concerned? I'm writing this letter to inform you of my resignation from King Fisher Public Schools as a junior high secretary, effective September 30th, 2024. Would thank you for the opportunity awarded for you the last six years. Michelle Connor, 9/11/24.
Do we need to vote to accept that? How about that we accept your resignation? Michelle Connor. One second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. New business, announcements.
Can we just say that we're excited for Mr. Evans to be here and what he presented and the transparency and the, the knowledge of the financials, right? I think we found a lot of comfort in that and I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah, I was going to say, just moving forward with the game plan, understanding, um, the big picture, for us, for the community, is valuable. And your last 10 years as a, as a school finance officer, directing schools in situations like this is valuable. Thank you for it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Just, just remember, whenever you get tired of seeing those spreadsheets and those little circle grounds, they're still coming.
That's okay.
However, they're, they're.
We're down two. And adjourned.
I make a motion to adjourn. One second.
All those in favor? Motion passes.